Valley and also the public library and our Read on Prescott Steering Committee. And it's where we actually give books monthly. Books are sent to young people between the age of birth and five. And so far, we've read about 460 books that we give out every month to children here in the Prescott area. And PALE was recently chosen by the Arizona Community Foundation as one of their highlighted community services that we're doing. And because of that, if you will go to Facebook and if you will like it, every time we get, the more likes we get, the more chance we'll get more money. So please go to the library, Facebook, our Facebook for the city, and just simply like the PALE Prescott Area Imagination Library. This is a program that was started by Dolly Parton many years ago. Very happy to do it in Prescott. Again, it was seed money from our Rotarys that provided that, and we're going to keep this going. So help us with that, and maybe we'll get some more money for our project. The other thing I'd like to recognize, and that is our Community Commission on Well-Being. We now have our website, on the city's website. We have our survey that we have completed. We've done a couple of press releases. I've been on the radio talking about this. We want everybody to complete this survey. It's a survey, 16 simple questions about well-being in the city of Prescott. And so we want some feedback from all of you. And we've done a couple of articles and some magazines and a lot of good things that we have planned, but we need feedback. So go to our city website and click on Take the Survey, and please take the survey. So so far, Mike, what do we have right now, John? About 300?
300.
Yeah, and then I delivered a bunch today to Mills on Willso. We're really trying to really cast the net and get a lot of surveys back. So we want your input, so please help us with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Today, we have an invocation by Elder Chris Krogodall with Calvary Chapel of Prescott, and the pledge will be led by Councilman Good.
Is this my time? Oh, thank you for standing. You don't have to, unless you have to. I'm Chris Krogodall with Calvary Prescott. I'll make this real short. I know you guys have a lot to do, and I want to support you in that. I want you to know that our church, Calvary Prescott, we do support you guys. We pray for you. We appreciate you guys stepping up and doing the roles that you have in serving the community and leading. I do want to share a scripture with you this morning. It's one of my favorites. King Asa of Judah was one of the best kings that Judah had. He followed God all his days, and God did something awesome this one time, actually lots of times. But Second Chronicles, Chapter 14, verse 11, says, "And Asa cried out to the Lord his God and said, 'Lord, it is nothing for you to help, whether with many or with those who have no power. Help us, O Lord our God, for we rest on you, and in your name we go against this multitude, O Lord. You are our God; do not let man prevail against you.'" And just quick context, the Ethiopian army coming against them to Judah to overtake them was about a million. They had about 500,000, so two to one odds. And King Asa called out to the Lord. Quickly, the next verse says, "So the Lord struck the Ethiopians before Asa and Judah, and the Ethiopians fled." So we're in this tough time, you know? Thankfully, we live in Prescott and Yavapai County that hasn't experienced near as much as some other areas. And I think that a lot of that's due to leadership and certainly God's blessings. And so we appreciate you guys. And I want you to know that when we follow God, you guys know this already, I bet, but when we follow God and His ways, He pours out the blessings. Okay? He's with us. So let me pray for you, and then I'll let you guys, you know, continue with your meeting. Lord, we just thank you for this day. I just want to lift up these leaders to you, the staff, everyone that's here who are meeting to make the decisions, Lord, that are so crucial, that they're talking about how to take care of the city employees and law enforcement, Lord. And they're, they have decisions to make, and the public eye is upon them, and there's pressure, and there's political things that happen, and there's all kinds of stress that I don't even understand probably, that they have to do. And so we lift up all these things to you, and we pray that you give them your wisdom. And I pray, Lord, that they would trust in you, and they would follow your ways, and that they would see you faithful to your word, true, and pouring out the blessings upon them all. Thank you, God, in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, wherever you may be, please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag and the republic for which it stands.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Orme.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, let's move on to presentations.
Presentation from Leslie Horton, Director of Yavapai County Community Health Services regarding COVID-19. And Leslie, sorry, before you speak, the interpreter has asked that you speak very clearly so that he can do the interpretation through Zoom.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Leslie Horton, Director of Yavapai County Community Health Services. So thank you for having me here, Mayor and Council. And I'm happy to provide an update on COVID-19 as it relates to our community. And as the pastor just mentioned, our community has been impacted differently with COVID-19 than other communities in the state. When Arizona was a hotspot in the state, Yavapai County was still rising in conjunction in terms of case numbers, but not nearly at the rate and the percent positivity that some of these other counties were facing. And so I'm very thankful to be the Health Director in Yavapai County and to have had the experience of working with so many great leaders across our county. We have incredible leadership at the city level, at the town level, and across the county, at the county level. And everyone has really poured in support and prioritized public health in a time where we're meeting all kinds of challenges individually as well as together. Some of the things that I've included in my slide up here that you can see are resources. And I do know the place that we are now with COVID-19, we're almost five months into the pandemic here locally, and I'm starting to see some ramifications on an individual level in our communities that we didn't necessarily see clearly before COVID-19. We had red flags in regards to mental health, behavioral health. We had high rates of suicide. We had other community and societal issues that we were working on facing. And now I think that we, here five months into a pandemic, are seeing more clearly that these things are rising in priority in our communities. So I realize that a lot of priority has been put on how to, how to support our communities when it comes to COVID-19. I do ask that all of our leaders understand that mental health and behavioral health need to remain a top priority as we go forward. And I do see the long-term mental health ramifications of a pandemic and its effects on employment, on quarantine and isolation, on just mental health and anxiety as it stands now, is gonna, it's gonna last longer than the physical health ramifications of COVID-19. So there is great resources at Yavapai Stronger Together, which is supported by the Justice in Mental Health Coalition. People can always call our hotline, that's the 928-442-5103 number. And there is also a statewide Arizona 211 number. There's Spanish resources as well. So please reach out. I ask that our community also check in with their neighbors. Talk to your friends, your neighbors, and, you know, if they've been in their home for a while and not come out, you know, maybe call them up and see how they're doing, because I know that a lot of people are starting to see the tolls of social isolation. And that was already an issue in our communities prior to the pandemic. So it hasn't gotten better at this point. But on to more data that I know you're all eagerly awaiting, although we do post this information almost daily to our website. We do take the weekends off because my staff need a couple of days off, even though we don't often get those days off, but without posting this information on the weekends now. So right now, in Yavapai County, we have 1,647 people who have tested positive for COVID-19. Now, that being said, that's how many cases we have up to date, starting back in mid-March, when we started seeing cases. So we have seen a heightening of cases, as you can see from my chart there. And what we thought we were seeing throughout time, I know that our mayor and I have been on the radio many times talking about whether or not we're at the peak of COVID, and all those little blips that you see there over the weeks, we kept thinking might be our peak. And little did we know, we had not at all reached our peak. And hopefully, from what we're seeing now, I can hopefully say that our peak in COVID happened there right at the end of June and early July. And so we did see a very slow trickle in from March all the way into mid-June of cases. Now, the orange that you can see there on this graph is when we had the outbreak at Mingus Mountain Academy. And of that outbreak, we did have 123 cases pop up, but they were in an isolated environment for the most part. The students are at that academy, they stay on campus, the staff go home at night, and that did cause a little additional spread based on that outbreak at Mingus Mountain. What I was very thankful for is that that, our first outbreak that we had to deal with was primarily affecting youth. And they had a pediatrician that was overseeing their students. They worked with us to get testing, to get the hospital in there to do testing onsite, make sure that they mitigated spread to as many staff as possible so that we could lessen the impact of COVID in the community based on that outbreak. And once we dealt with that outbreak, thankfully, none of the students had long-term health effects. They were all pretty healthy and had some flu-like symptoms, had very light symptoms. Some of the staff got a little bit sicker, but were able to wait this out at home and fare very well and return back to work. And so they, they fared quite well. And then, as you can see, right after that outbreak, we did see a lessening in cases right away. So we didn't, we were a little concerned about community spread at that point. We didn't quite see it yet at that point. Our case numbers dropped right back down. And then, as we started seeing the rest of the state, one thing I look at when I'm looking at our numbers, and even in any flu season, virus outbreak, anything that we see, once Maricopa County starts becoming heavily affected by a virus or an outbreak, we know that we are probably going to be soon to follow. And so Maricopa County, starting in June, started seeing a dramatic spike in their cases, where they went from 500 cases a day to 1,000 cases to 1,500, and reached, their peak was upsides of 5,000 cases a day, which, they're a large city, you would almost expect that in a large city, but they did drive us into, with the help of several other counties along the southern border and along our northern border of the state, they did drive us into being a hotspot in the country. And so that brought a lot of media coverage, a lot of attention to Arizona. And so we are thankfully no longer one of the hotspots, but as you can see, we have had kind of a spike in cases at the end of June, and now we're on a downward trajectory, which is really good for us to see, especially as we're looking at schools starting and wanting to get into a place where we know COVID's not going to go away, but we want to get to a place where we have much less of the virus in the community for people to spread and transmit. So right now, we have, like I said, 1,647 cases. We have had 27,586 residents tested, and that doesn't actually even give a full number because we do have other testing sites that aren't entered. All, all of their tests are not necessarily entered into that number. We currently have 609 individuals deemed recovered, and we will have more in the very, in the next several days, because what we do is wait a month after someone has tested positive till the point that we call them to find out if they're fully recovered from COVID-19. And so when you look at those outbreak numbers, obviously, we were peaking right about a month ago. And so we're going to start having a lot of calls to make and a lot of people to deem recovered at this point in time. And so, and going forward. And so the one thing that was very concerning over Fourth of July weekend, right about the time that we were peaking in cases, is the same time that the hospitals had reached pretty much their capacity in terms of hospitalization ability. So if someone had, you know, if we'd had any more outbreak or any more injury or illness pretty much going into that Fourth of July weekend, we would have probably maxed out YRM-C. VVM-C was close, and even the VA had more hospitalizations at that point in time than any others. And what we've been seeing is that across the state, that has been pretty normal. As for our hospitals with COVID, they're all saying about 55% of their hospitalizations are non-COVID, but with the addition of COVID, it's putting them right at their threshold of hospitalizations. So this is still something that we look at daily and make sure that our hospitals have capacity for anyone who needs to come in for illness or injury. And right now, our hospitals are at a great level of capacity where I think YRM-C is at about 65% capacity at this point. So hopefully, they'll be back to elective surgeries soon. Hopefully, they'll be back to normal operations, also accommodating to those who have COVID. So the one most concerning thing that happened right around the same time that we saw a peak in cases is that we were also having outbreaks at Cottonwood Village, Granite Creek Rehabilitation Center, and Brookdale Assisted Living. And so in our chart, it does have different colors, which are kind of hard to see from that graph, but we did have a number of cases crop up at those assisted living sites where they were experiencing outbreaks. And that, of course, is going to be far more concerning. Those are our most vulnerable individuals at risk. And with that, we saw hospitalizations increase dramatically. We have also seen our rate of death due to COVID increase dramatically. So from a health department perspective, we work with the state who licenses these facilities, making sure they have good infection control. We provide them with PPE. We do as much as we can to support them to mitigate spread. But we went from having 11 reported deaths in Yavapai County to today having 56. The majority of those, well over half, we're finding, were associated with these outbreaks. And so that has been sad. My heart goes out to those families and their friends as they have suffered this loss, as well as several others in the community. While we were seeing that spike, we do have, you know, of people that are elderly with compromised immune systems especially, or underlying health conditions, if they get COVID-19, it's a far different scenario than someone who's young, healthy, and resilient. And so we have seen our rate of death increase. Let me go on to the next slide, so I can kind of go over those numbers. We have, like I said, we have our testing number. 27,586 individuals have been tested. We're seeing about a 5% to 6% positivity rate each day. Now, keep in mind, some of our testing is targeted to these assisted living sites or other areas where we know there's going to be positive cases. So when we do targeted testing, it actually brings that positivity rate up. We are trying to improve community testing right now, and Spectrum Healthcare just stepped up and offered to do blitz testing on every Saturday through August, which will be free testing for anyone in the community that wants to just step in and get tested. If they know they have contact, it's good to go get tested, or exposure, I should say, contact with someone who's been positive. Or if you have cold-like symptoms that crop up or a fever, go get tested. But you should do that anyways. People should seek out any number of testing options. On our Yavapai County website, right under this dashboard, there are all the testing sites listed. So this information, though, shows us the distribution of cases in our county, the age groups, the case mortality or fatality rate is 3.5% right now of all of our cases. That dramatically jumped up when we saw those outbreaks at assisted living sites. Across the board, though, what we're seeing is that in Yavapai County, there's no area that is seeing far more spread than any other. And so that's important to note. We have an interesting kind of sample in Yavapai County of when you look at mask mandates and how effective they are versus not, it's not a, it's not a good clear delineation in our county because I see, I see adherence on both sides of the mountain being different. But in, in the Verde Valley side of our county, Sedona, Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and Jerome, all mandated masks. In Prescott Quad City area, none of the cities or towns mandated masks, nor did the county for the unincorporated areas. And yet, when I've been in the Verde Valley, I see about the same amount of compliance of mask-wearing. And so I do appreciate that our leadership continue to push those messages of when you cannot physically distance from others, when you don't have a sneeze guard, or other ways of protecting yourself from those around you, make sure that you do wear a mask, especially in indoor environments. And so, you know, the other thing to note, and along with that, is the fact that our spread across the county has been very similar per community. And with or without those mandates in place, we have seen a lowering in trajectory of cases across the county. So that is good news for our county and all of the cities impacted. Now, the one last thing I was going to go over, and you guys can ask questions, of course, based on any of this that I'm sharing. And, you know, if you did see, there is all the age groups, we were for a while seeing a much more sizable spread among the 20 to 54-year-olds in those age groups. Now, it seems to have kind of leveled off in our county to all ages. It's pretty straightforward. The 18 to 24-year-olds are still seeing quite a bit of spread, as are the 45 to 54-year-olds and 55 to 64-year-olds. So it is those individuals over the age of 65, and especially if they have underlying health conditions, that I still ask that they stay home more often, that they really use all of those recommendations in place if they do go out, protect themselves as much as possible. Now, along the lines of our mortality rate and case fatality rate, I just wanted to give you an idea since that's, a lot of our questions recently have been around these deaths. And our fatality rate, like I said, is 3.5%. A large majority of that attributed to assisted living cases. Now, one of the main differences that I'm seeing is that females, we only have 19 females who have passed away due to COVID and 37 males. And so there is a large delineation there in terms of the difference between males being impacted by this more than women. Cottonwood has had 10, the majority of those being from Cottonwood Village. Prescott, 26, the majority of those being from our assisted living sites that have had outbreaks. And then in other Quad Cities and other Verde towns, we've had a total of 20 cases in other towns, not including Cottonwood or Prescott. And then our age groups. So as you can see in this, the majority, it's about 80, what is that, 83% are over the age of 65. And so, and what I can say about these too, that we don't show on the charts, is that most of these individuals, no matter what age, had at least one, if not multiple, underlying health conditions, which made them more prone to complications and more prone to death due to COVID. So, you know, I, I appreciate your time to listen to all this. It's, I know some people really enjoy data and some kind of zone out when you start talking numbers, but at the same time, I do hope to, our community can understand what they're seeing here, where these numbers are rooted, and the implications right now on COVID. I do ask that all of our communities continue to be diligent in doing what we can to lower the spread. The governor, the governor just recently mentioned that in opening schools and to feel safe about opening schools to students being in person, a good threshold of positivity rate in testing is to be under 5%. We're right there. We're right hovering around just over 5% right now. So we do need to continue to stay at home more often, wear a mask if you go out, wash your hands, try to physically distance wherever possible. That's the best way to keep from catching this virus, and especially stay home if you're sick. That's the one thing I've noticed in almost all the cases that we've had in Yavapai County is that they did have contact with someone who was actually sick at the time. So if you're sick, stay home. If you notice someone around you that seems sick or is not acting normal, seems feverish or coughing or sneezing, step back, make sure you physically distance from those individuals. So do you have questions for me?
Well, Leslie, thank you so much for your presentation. You know, it's been a real privilege to work with you in the county, and you've made yourself available for the city, for our businesses, and the hospital, and first responders. We really appreciate your approach, how you're balanced, reasonable, thoughtful, and just want to thank you for your leadership. It's been really a difficult time, and I know it's been stressful and a lot to deal with. So thank you for, for all your work and dedication to our city and the county. Any questions, comments? To the council? Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it, Leslie.
All right. Thank you very.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you, Leslie. That was very informative. As you know, or maybe not know, I'm actually a registered nurse, bachelor's science degree from the University of Arizona, and I had 10 years' experience cardio-pulmonary. I worked with heart and lung patients respiratory on ventilators in ICU settings. And early on, it became apparent that the basic practices of public health, of masking, social distancing, and good handwashing were very important, simple ways to fight this virus and flatten the curve. So I was wearing a mask, you know, you know, early on in the epidemic to keep myself safe and to keep others safe, because I do volunteer and went to Gallup and worked during the surge. And they did flatten the curve there with those three basic public health techniques. And public education is very important if you want compliance with masking. People need to understand. So I was going to ask if maybe the county could have a PSA campaign similar to what the governor has started to do, but have it more local and keep the curve flattened, because we have a son who works in Phoenix at one of the major hospitals, and they've been slammed. The healthcare employees have been devastated with infections, and we've, the state has had to bring in, they call them travelers, hundreds, like 500 in Tucson, 500 in Phoenix, to take up the slack for the healthcare professionals that have been out sick, have died. And it's so important that we keep this surge from reoccurring, and we need to deliver the message that it does work, even if it's not 100%. I mean, you're going to go to Safeway, 99 people are wearing masks, there's going to be the one person. Okay. But as long as we have the majority of people that mask up, social distance, avoid crowds, use common sense, good hand hygiene, we can keep this thing from resurging again and maybe, you know, start opening up our public places. I mean, there's a lot of businesses that are using those techniques, and they're starting to open up. And if we're going to get our economy going, we just need to be nimble and adapt, basically, to what has become the new normal. Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you, Kathy, and I do appreciate you and your husband's help and service, especially in Gallup. And I knew that you went there and helped out, and a lot of individuals did sacrifice their time and devote a lot of energy to helping there, and they were able to flatten that curve. I'm very happy to see across our northern Arizona counties, where many of the tribal nations were affected, they've been able to flatten that curve and really drop their number of positive cases at this point in time. As for a campaign, yes, we actually just put in for what they are calling an ELC grant to the state of Arizona, it's federal funding for COVID-related activities. And a large portion of what we asked for is devoted to a campaign for masking, physical distancing, staying home, hand washing, all of those things. And our health education crew is working on those, that PSA work, as well as, there's probably going to be billboards and other things, depending on what gets approved through our state health department. And so we're excited to do more community outreach and to be more visible in terms of our messaging, because right now, we're dependent on online resources, on any of the speaking that I do, or other, you know, avenues to reach the public. And our media has been very helpful locally in supporting solid messaging. But I want to make sure that we get out there even more, and we will be doing that. I'm also, I've offered to help this city of Prescott to do some PSAs that support those same messages. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Leslie, great job. You've just done such a great job through all of this. So proud of you.
So proud of you. When I look at the national map, Arizona seems to be standing out as doing very well.
Yes, just in the last, I would say, two weeks.
Right, yes. And so a couple of states, right? Arizona, Maine?
There are several. I think there is four states that are in a group with us where we're seeing a serious decrease in the trajectory of our cases. Across much of our nation, they're headed into what would be considered a second wave for some, and sometimes a first wave even for those states that were lesser impacted early on. So we are in a category right now that is in a good trend and trajectory. So it's good to see.
Well, thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Thanks for being here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda, please. Anything that you would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Mayor, yes.
Yeah, Councilman Good?
I'd like to pull item E just for discussion and comment, please.
Okay. Item E, anybody else?
Not will entertain a motion?
May I move to approve consent agenda items 7A through 7J excluding 7E?
Second. I have a motion and a second. I believe we can use our
You can use your voting.
Voting devices up here. So let's please vote.
Please vote.
Vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's look at item 7E. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. I know the widening project on Highway 69, primarily through the Yavapai-Prescott Indian Tribe Reservation, has been discussed and budgeted and planned for, and we heard it was going to be actually moving forward, and then we heard it was being delayed. So I'd just like to know where we stand at this point. I know there is an additional $100,000 being applied to the design, but, you know, maybe Mayor Protem Orr, being the chair of CIMPO, can enlighten us to where this stands.
Very good, yeah. Mayor Protem?
Sure, thank you. Yes, Councilman Good, it has kind of been on again, off again. ADOT came to us saying in order to continue to move forward, we needed to come up with another $100,000, which we found within CIMPO itself. There was no additional money to the city. ADOT has kind of put everything right now a little bit on hold. However, they are reconsidering, the board is reconsidering, and I think Highway 69, hopefully, as well as I-17, will be one that continues to move forward. So I don't know, Craig, if you have anything else you want to add to that?
Well, and when the question came up yesterday on this, also, we started looking for the answer of, okay, what was the additional cost for this $100,000? And it's not a matter of an additional cost. It's when this IGA was put into place between all of the parties, that was before the design had been scoped or was moving forward at all. So the IGA was created with the estimate that the, that the design cost would be $1 million. So that's where all the parties, Yavapai County, the city of Prescott, Yavapai County Flood Control District, Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, and ADOT, Arizona Department of Transportation, all went together on the IGA with the estimate that the design would be $1 million. Now, then, once the design moved forward, the scope and fee was all put into place, the design started out, then it came out that the true cost was 1.1 million. So that's what this $100,000 covers then, is the difference between the estimate and the true design cost. And it is being covered through CIMPO, C-Y-M-P-O, so no direct financial impact on the city with this IGA amendment.
So can we expect that this 1.1 now is going to be a fixed design cost? And then when the state actually approves their budget and construction plans, that it'll go forward at this point, once that legislature approves their next year's budget?
Yes, this, this is the design cost, and the design should be nearing 90% from, from the last update that we heard. And yes, as Mayor Protem mentioned, it's, like, we have contingency items in our budget this year. This project is listed as contingency on ADOT to see how funding continues forward, but it is in their plan and their budget, just not ready to release it today.
And I think it's the same thing with I-17, right, Craig? I mean, they're
Yeah, the flex lane. Well, let's hope that the legislature reconvenes and gets their budget approved, and it's not just the skinny budget that they had at the last session, and we can get this widening done. It's far, far overdue. Thank you.
All right. If nothing else, we'll entertain a motion on that.
May I move to approve consent agenda item E?
Second.
Motion and second. Let's please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to item 8A, please.
Adoption of ordinance number 2020-1719 of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, levying upon the assessed value of the property within the city of Prescott, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for the general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2021. And adoption of ordinance number 2020-1725 of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Prescott by annexing approximately 1.876 acres of residentially zoned land, R1L-18, generally located south and east of the intersection of State Route 89 and State Route 89A in Yavapai County, Arizona, to the city of Prescott, and assigning a zoning classification thereto.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance items 8A and 8B.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Not, let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Good?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that on consent item A, we're only talking about the property tax levy rate that we agreed not to increase.
Yes, we're talking about the property tax levy, which we did a public hearing on two weeks ago, and it was just the existing rate plus the amount for new construction added to the rolls. No additional increase to the levy.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Very good. Thanks for that clarification. Let's take a vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Before we go to regular agenda, let me just, again, remind folks who are on Zoom today that if you would like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand. And then at the end of that item, we'll, we'll see if there's anyone out there on Zoom, and the clerk will bring you into the meeting, so to speak.
Correct.
So that you can make your public comment. Anything else on that, Sarah?
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on to item 9A, please.
Approval of city contract number 2021-009 with the Prescott Area Art Trust approving a donation of If Horses Could Talk bronze statue in the SR-89 Deepwell Ranch Roundabout.
Do we have anybody presenting on this, Michael, or?
Yeah, come on, Craig, come on down.
Tony is on the call, Craig, if you want me to upgrade her.
That's a good idea.
Tony, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, council, on behalf of the Art and Public Places Committee, as the sitting staff liaison to that committee, we present the approval of the art donation agreement with the Prescott Area Art Trust. They have an intent to donate this bronze statue, If Horses Could Talk, and it's slotted for the State Route 89 Deepwell Ranch Roundabout. This piece is ready for placement in the roundabout. Public Works has received the encroachment permit from ADOT to place the statue in the roundabout. And Craig, did you have anything that you want to add to that?
He says no.
Okay, so the installation is kind of only scheduled for the beginning of August, if this is approved by council today.
Tony, thank you for that. Questions, comments from the council? Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Very excited about this. This is a piece that was done by Bill Nebiker. The size is gigantic. It will be 10 by 8 by 14. It's been ready for quite a while. However, we needed the permit from ADOT to get this moving. That, that roundabout actually will remain in the ownership of ADOT, but the city will then take possession of the bronze. This was made possible, of course, it was a Bill Nebiker statue. Ed Riley with the Bronze Smith is the one that did the work. He's been holding on to this, waiting for us to get that permit. And this was made available by the James Family Trust, donation to the Art Trust of $250,000. It will be a magnificent piece that's going to be right there in that roundabout, you know, as people go to and from the airport. It is tremendous, and I just, just want to express gratitude to the James Family Trust, Bill Nebiker, and Ed Riley.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2021-009.
Second.
Motion and second. Let's please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to item 9B, please.
Public hearing for CDBG program years 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and the 2020 Annual Action Plan.
Mayor, if I could, real quick, I'm going to be accusing myself from the next two items because my employer will be receiving CDBG funds this year.
All right. Thank you for that. Councilman Scholl.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Michelle Chavez. I work for the Community Development Department at the city of Prescott, and I'm here to speak on this item regarding the CDBG Consolidated Plan and the Annual Action Plan for 2020. So the, as you know, every five years, the CDBG program has to submit a consolidated plan to HUD in order to continue to receive our entitlement funds. So part of the piece of that is we need to do a needs assessment of the community, which we did in late February and early March, to get community feedback on needs in the community based on the CDBG program, and also to get feedback from our community advisory committee. So you all, most of you know, we have a very active seven-member volunteer community advisory committee that is just excellent, and they meet every month. They help us make decisions on how annual funds are going to be spent. They look at all of the applications, which is competitive. And they also help us every five years to look at kind of the demographics and economics of Prescott and see if kind of the priorities that they have are in line with what's needed. So we did that assessment. I brought the feedback from the community to the committee, and they looked at what they heard and kind of what was happening, and decided to not radically change the five-year plan. There's not a ton of significant changes. There's two items that they decided to add as priorities, which is health and renter-related services. So based on what they heard and based on things that were going on in the community, there's a slight change in priorities, which was in the staff report, which was to add two priorities regarding health and renter-related services. In addition to the consolidated plan, we need to submit an action plan every year to tell HUD how we're going to spend our entitlement funds. And so this year, the, the thing that's unique is that we're submitting our five-year annual, five-year consolidated plan, as well as our annual action plan, will be submitted as part of that five-year plan. So the purpose of today's action is to first approve the draft consolidated plan and annual action plan, and then to pass a resolution, which will be the next item, and that will allow the city to submit our draft plans to HUD. So there's, it's kind of a twofold item today. So again, things are not significantly changing. We have a little bit more funds this year. We have $255,338 just to split up competitively. And the allocation is set by HUD on how that, those funds can be spent. So majority usually are spent on construction, as you can see, and public service, and then we have a small portion that we can spend on admin. And again, the grant allocations are, have already been approved by the citizen advisory committee, our seven-member volunteer panel. They looked at applications, which were submitted on a competitive basis, and they decided on how the funds would be allocated this year. The 2020 program, again, similar to programs that you all have seen in the past, similar programs for service related to transportation for seniors and disabled adults, quality improvements for youth programming, upgrades to public facilities that serve low-to-modern income residents in Prescott, upgrades to facilities that serve veterans, low-to-moderate residents, mentally ill individuals, youth, homeless, and recently homeless individuals in Prescott. The projects that the committee decided to fund, all of the agencies that the committee decided to fund this year are returning agencies that have in the past years been funded. And as you can see, it's a pretty group that you're used to seeing, People Who Care, New Horizons, US Vets, The Launchpad, West Yavapai, Boys and Girls Club, Agape House, et cetera. So again, the program is really doing a good job of reaching the most amount of people with a small pot of money. I think Prescott is very impressive in how they've managed the CDBG program over the years, utilizing the citizen advisory committee is an excellent way to make sure that the public is aware of how the funds are going to be spent, make sure that all of the decisions are transparent, and that people are aware of how the funds are used. So the next steps that we have is we submit to HUD for approval, our five-year and annual plan, and then after that, we get eight bids if we need to, so projects need to be bidded out. We work on our contracts, agreements, and environmental reviews, and then the work can begin after all the approvals take place. So the recommended action is to close the public hearing and then also to pass the resolution, which I believe is the second item that's separate from this. That concludes my presentation today, and I take any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? All right. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, move to close the public hearing?
Second. Motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Passes 6-0.
Mayor, move to adopt resolution 2020-1753.
Second. Motion and second. Let's take a vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item 9D, please.
Approval of city contract number 2020-132 for the purchase of a 2021 Freightliner dump truck using Arizona State Contract Number CTR41810.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Council. Craig Doseth, Public Works. So this item is to support the Streets Maintenance Division of Public Works in conjunction with Fleet Services in requesting authorization to purchase a new 10-wheel dump truck to replace an existing 2003 10-wheel dump truck. So Streets Division uses 10-wheel dump truck primarily for plowing, plowing snow, hauling asphalt, milling's inert debris, materials for inventory, and transporting equipment to job sites. 10-wheel dump trucks are frontline pieces of equipment used on a daily basis within the Streets Division, and this truck has given us excellent service for 17 years. The existing 2003 Volvo dump truck, 17 years old, has approximately 136,000 miles on it. Now, I want to be very clear here. We're, we're talking about swapping this truck from frontline piece of equipment to secondary. So the truck is that old and has that many miles. However, it is still a viable piece of equipment, as long as it's not the frontline piece of equip in that secondary mode. Currently, when we have one of these trucks go down, like when we're plowing snow, then we're down. We have a truck that's off of the street, and we have streets, whether it's SR-89, Williamson Valley, Willow Creek Road, that's not being plowed because we do not have a backup. So we're looking at, at reserving this truck then as that backup unit in order to support us when we do have other equipment. us when we do have other equipment go down. The replacement was reviewed and approved by the Fleet Asset Review Board. This was one of the few pieces of equipment that made it in this year's budget. There was, at one point, there was as many as 32 pieces of equipment considered for the budget, and this was one of seven that survived through the budget review process with that. So we are considering, or the quote, the bid from this, is utilizing Arizona's state procurement system for purchase of the truck. And again, it is a critical piece of equipment for our daily operations within Streets Division. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you'd have.
Questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-132.
Second.
Have a motion and second, let's vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to item 7E, please.
Approval of city contract number 2021-008 for the acceptance of Arizona Department of Transportation Grant Number EOM3G01C in the amount of $250,000 for construction costs associated with the new passenger terminal at Prescott Regional Airport.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. How would you like some money? So back in November, we received $10 million in supplemental funds, and at that time, the state was not sure whether or not they could issue their match, which is normally 2.5%. But with some gentle pressure and prodding, and thanks to our legislative friends in the state, House and Senate, we were able to get this approved, and so we are here to receive an additional $250,000 from the state of Arizona, that is in addition to the $1 million that we received last year for the design of the terminals. So this is nice for the money to continue to roll in to help support the construction of the new terminal.
It was a lot of fun to do those timbers in the top of the ceiling there of the terminal the other day, that was a lot of fun. Thanks for putting all that together, I know it's kind of difficult given the virus right now, but it was very meaningful and worthwhile, so thanks for doing that.
Well, it's our pleasure, and you know, Christie did a lot of work on that ceremony, and we have a representative of Dibble here, who has been our contract administrator on the project, and it's a team effort, and we're really making a lot of progress.
Yeah, you can kind of see, you know, better, when we were out there drawing lines in the dirt, it wasn't as meaningful to me as it was the other day to see the roof line, and it's going to be a really beautiful terminal, so.
It's an extraordinary, extraordinary building, I agree.
Awesome. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. Hi there, Robin, I was wondering if we could have an update on the service in the airport, airport activity?
So let's, that's something, council member, you could ask, you know, after the meeting, let's stick to the agenda item here, please.
Sorry.
Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Another example of the ongoing great management and support we're getting, not only from the state, but the FAA, and it was really great to see the topping ceremony there. I hope they didn't cost us $62,000 per beam. Yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun, and be able to see it really look, it's almost like when a residential piece of property, you start to see the framing, and then the roof go on, and it really, it really brings it into much stronger focus, so. Another great opportunity to move forward quickly, and I think we're still looking at about a, what is it, next October, I mean, not this coming October, but when do we expect to have the terminal turnkey opening?
It should be open mid-March, that's what we're expecting. Of course, you know, you could have weather events and things like that that may put things back. We've had very few delays associated with COVID, which we're happy about. Some staff shortages in the construction project, but for the most part, it's moved forward within about 30 days of the original timeline, so we feel comfortable.
Were those COVID-related, or just the fact that there's so much construction going on, it's hard to find the good skilled labors that they need?
We were told by the contractor they had some out that were in quarantine.
Yeah.
So they did have to get additional local talent, so we were pleased to see that they even took advantage of our local workforce even more.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2021-008 for the acceptance of ADOT Grant Number E0M3G01C. Second, that's a mouthful.
Have a motion and second, let's vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to the last item, 9F, please.
Approval of multiple items for the taxiway Charlie relocation at Prescott Regional Airport.
So, talk about a mouthful, Councilmember Shishka. We actually have five items that you're considering at this time, and so why don't I unpack them one at a time, so we know. Overall, let me tell you about this project. The Taxiway Charlie Project is the relocation of our major commercial service taxiway, so it's parallel to our major commercial service runway. It was supposed to be, in order to meet our design code, which is a Group C3, it had to be 400 feet centerline to centerline from the runway to the taxiway, and it was short of that, so it's being moved 75 feet further away from, for safety reasons, from the runway centerline. As part of that project, it is a whopper of a project. All total, it's probably around a $16 million project. The FAA gave us a go letter last year for about $5.1 million, which means that's kind of what you can expect, but also said there was a possibility additional funds may be forthcoming. So we did do a base bid, and we did an add alt. And that add alternate bid gave us the option, should the additional money have come through in the last month or so, we could go ahead and go forward with all the phases of the project. What I have in front of you today is the first phase of the project, which is about a third of the project. It's from Charlie 1 to about the Crosswind Runway. There's about two-thirds of the project left even after this, and the FAA would like to see that project come to fruition, but Congress approved a certain amount of funding, and because it came through at 100% of that funding amount, everybody accepted it. So there was nobody who put it back into the pot. If others would have put money back into the pot, we might have been awarded a larger amount. So that's the reason why we went out for an original base bid and an add alt. So what I have in front of you today is the first item, which is approval of city contract number 2021-007, accepting the FAA grant in the amount of $5,578,947. And the way that's going to be allocated is in item number two, approval of a city contract to asphalt paving and supplies, they were the winning bid for the base bid, for an amount not to exceed $4,364,953. And that's for the construction of that first phase. And then additionally, this is for approval of city contract in amending the contract with Dibble Engineering, and this will be for construction administration services. These are the construction administration services that are given to us to help run the project and make sure it's done in accordance with FAA standards. The fourth item is approval of a contract amendment, again with Dibble Engineering. Now, this is what the FAA indicated, is they wanted us to go back and redesign the project. Because this is a discretionary grant that we're going to get in the future, because I've asked for the entitlement grant to come back to us to pay for even more money toward the terminal for next year, it will be coming later in the year. Entitlement grants come earlier, discretionary grants come later. So this will ultimately be to benefit the city of Prescott, because we won't know about the next tranche of money until, say, mid-June or July of next year. That project is so big, it will largely span two years, because what we'll have to do is have a winter hiatus. And I'm explaining this to you because a couple of the contractors were asking why we did the base bid versus the add alt, and we'd like the public to know why we did that, okay? The final item is here, is some of the work may be done at night, so it's a night work project. So those are the items that you're deciding today.
Very good. Robin, with the item for the redesign with Dibble?
Yes.
I assume that's the whole project, not?
That we'll be redesigning the remaining phases.
Okay.
So that, and it's a pretty comprehensive undertaking, but the FAA understood it should not come out of the city's pocket because they did not have the full $15 million this year. The redesign to have it cross two more years is what the FAA agreed to pay with the FAA's fund. This is a 100% federal grant, because of CARES Act, there is no state match, there is no local match.
Okay.
They're paying for everything.
So had that been designed previously when you had the previous bid, base bid with the alt add?
Yes, there was a design that included the first phase of the project being this year, and the rest of the project launching about March, when we get through the winter season, and going through the rest of the year. Because that money has not actually technically been authorized by Congress, meaning the future phases, then what happens with that is we have to wait until the next release of money, and as I'm standing here today in the middle of July, asking for this money, you know, you to approve this money, likewise, in a year from now, I will be back to ask for those additional funds. So since the project is being separated by almost a year from now till then, and that money has not been allocated by Congress, then this is the money that the FAA has this year.
Okay. So I don't understand why, if you did the add alt, and you had a low bid, why you couldn't keep that contractor, if they're willing to keep their prices the same, and just allow them to do the work as the money becomes available?
And that's a good question, but the FAA calls the shots on this, it's their rules. And their rules are, we have this much money, you can award this bid. We can't award any more money off of this unless the city wants to award it out of our pockets and take it on at risk, and I don't think we can do that safely, so we do have to play by their rules. And realize, in some communities where they've dealt with the FAA before, depending on the pot of money it comes from, there is more flexibility or less flexibility. This is the most stringent rule pot, this is based on AIP funds, this is not supplemental, this is not PFC-based funds. The redesign has to happen because we can't start in March, because the money will not come till June. Because we can't start in March, now we have to break the project into pieces, and there are user impacts, including the air carrier, that we want to be really careful about. So that's what the FAA is having us do, is go back and redesign the remaining two-thirds of the project, so it spans two years with minimal impact on the entire user community. And they will award probably only another $5 million next year, and then we'll probably wait another million, you know, another year. We'll probably go out with a base bid and an add alt again next year, but there's never guarantee until the FAA awards the funds, and Congress approves those funds.
It seems like the key here is the redesign, because the initial bid was not based on what's going to be redesigned.
The base bid is actually the part that was always going to go, you're right.
But the add alt?
The add alt.
That they bid wasn't based on what's going to be happening here with this redesign?
The add alt was actually an option to do everything.
Right.
There is no option to grant everything, the FAA will not approve it. So it is being halved down or thudded down, down to its base bid, because those are the only two things they approved us to go forward and ask for bids on. They don't hold those, those bids are only good for 90 days, and I hear what you're saying, what if the person wants to go ahead and say, or the company says, we'll go ahead and honor the bid, but that's not the point. Because we can't have that money in March, the money won't be available till at least probably June, July, sometimes as late as August or September, you have to have now a redesign that cuts that one big, long second phase into two other phases that can bridge two different years. And because of that redesign, and it's, I mean, this is a super complicated project because there's so much fill, and so much, you know, earthwork, utility work, everything along that area, because it's a huge drop-off next to the taxiways, all the way down to the, particularly the east end. It's about where all that's going to be transported in, when the paving can be done to effectively do it. So I actually did call the FAA earlier this week, and they confirmed the statements I made to you earlier about the reasons why it could not be all awarded at this time.
Very good. Mayor Protem?
Yes, so Robin, you've mentioned, by the way, the beam, the beam was a lot of fun, thank you for that.
It was.
Thank you, Christie. You've mentioned CARES Act.
Yes.
So, so a lot of this money is coming from CARES Act?
That's correct, now some of the--
From FAA?
What's that? Well, the CARES Act actually was approved by, you know, the House and the Senate, and, right, and they had the FAA allocate money. Now, in this case, the CARES Act paid for our share. That's what the CARES Act came in and said, AIP, you know, the money, it supplemented Airport Improvement Program funds to be able to pay for our share and the state's share of this fund. So that's what the CARES Act.
That's like, 2.5%?
Yeah, the 2.5%, and the state's 2.5%. So the state actually was a benefactor from the fact that the CARES Act relieved both their share and our share, and the federal share went to 100%.
All right, good.
And you've probably heard, but the HEAL just passed the Senate, and there's another $10 billion in there for airports. We'll see what happens with the House. Yeah, yeah, and we'll see what happens with the House, but that may be quite an opportunity for us to gain additional support. In the future, especially for those 41 people flying out tomorrow to Denver.
Well, it certainly is, you know, travel has been affected, so.
Yeah.
It's the right thing to do.
Our load factors are doing quite well.
Other questions, comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2021-007.
Second.
Motion and second, let's take a vote.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2021-006.
Second.
Motion and second, let's take a vote.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2019-069A17.
Second.
Motion and second, let's take a vote.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2019-69A18.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
And finally, move to approve night work, every night of the week, no. Move to approve night work.
Second.
Your second.
You know the drill.
Yeah.
Passes seven zero.
Very good, thank you so much, Robin, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Robin.
The quote today is coming from Franklin Delano Roosevelt, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself." This meeting is adjourned.
Absolutely.